Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening. How are you, Brad?
I am just spiffy. How are you?
I'm spiffy as well.
Good to hear.
Hi Faith.
I will be so glad when we can meet in person.
Chief, I'm thinking Sergeant Clusey doesn't realize you're back.
Are we not meeting in person? We're meeting at Gus's house. It's weird.
One of us is there. Gus's house.
Hi, everybody. We're just navigating through the usual technical difficulties here tonight. Hopefully, everybody can hear me. If you should be hearing my voice right now, could somebody nod if they're hearing me? Excellent. All right. Well, welcome, everybody, to the April 13th, 2021 regular city council meeting for City of Utica. Councilman O'Donnell, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Just one tiny bit of housekeeping. We did have to declare a local state of emergency to be able to continue with our remote meetings. To be completely compliant with the state's regulations, we do have to change our roll call just a slight bit. When your name is called, in addition to saying present, you need to add present from whatever city you're in in the township, Macomb Township, Michigan. So when I'm called on, I will say, present in Utica, Macomb County. Okay? Any questions about that? Madam Clerk, will you take a roll call, please?
Sakura. Sakura's not here. Trenzie.
Present in Utica, Macomb County.
O'Donnell.
Present in Utica, Macomb County.
Deion.
Present, Utica, Macomb County.
Ryan.
Present in Utica, Macomb County.
Townsend. Sherri on mute.
Present, Utica, Macomb County.
And Mayor Calendrino.
Present from City Hall in Utica, Michigan, Macomb County. Thank you, everyone. You were all presented with the minutes from the meeting on 3/9/2021 and the special minutes, special council meeting minutes from 3/25/2021. Are there any comments, any changes that need to be made? If not, we'd be looking for a motion to approve the minutes for 3/9 and 3/25.
Motion to present the minutes for 3/9 and 3/25 as presented.
Motion by Trenzie.
Support.
Support by Townsend. Any comments, any concerns? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sakura. Trenzie. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, thank you. The motion stands. At this time in the meeting, we open up the floor for any public comments for items that are listed on the agenda. We ask anyone that does have comments to please keep the time to three minutes. We do have a pretty packed council meeting tonight. We're hoping to keep it moving along nicely. Is there anyone from the public that has comments? Going once. Going twice. Madam Clerk, please, in the minutes, indicate that we had no comments from the public. And then we move, we're moving on to unfinished business. Downtown flower waterer, as everyone knows, is also, it's in your packet. We did approve the purchasing of the flowers and we set a budget for the total project, which would include the purchase of the flowers and the watering of those flowers. We still need to resolve how we're going to have the flowers be watered and indicate or determine if that budget that we allocated was adequate for that. I know Councilwoman Trenzie did a wonderful job of researching this, talking to the vendor that actually sells us the flowers. And she also discussed the care of those flowers with him. So I think I would like to turn the floor over to Councilwoman Trenzie to let us know what research she found out.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I did email what I'm going to say to all of the council members. So you kind of know what I'm going to say. But what I found, first I spoke with Joe Cucci, who is the owner of the company we get our flowers from. And the reason I called him was to find out, do we need to really water six days, seven days a week? Could we do it five days a week? But what he said is that they really do need to be watered six days a week. Seven, you know, is perfect, but six would work. They need to be fertilized with every single watering, and that is one of the keys. And they have to be watered in the morning. We had discussion at our council meeting that they could be watered at any time of the day. You know, maybe even in the evening, but not so because disease can set on fungus can set in if you water in the evening. So they do have to be paid early in the morning or in the morning, at least by be done by 10, 10-ish. Then, and also, we talked for a little bit about how long it should take to water. And it, he said, it takes about three minutes a plant. So if you ever, you know, counted it out, do the math, it would take about three and a half to four hours because we have 87 plants. We've ordered 87 plants. Then I spoke with Bill Lang and he confirmed that it takes three and a half to four hours. He confirmed also that it needs to be done in the morning, otherwise the disease can set in. So that, you know, that was good. And the tank in the gator that you pick up, that the individual would pick up at DPW, it's at DPW. It's filled at the onset with fertilizer added and then refilled two more times. So the water has to go back to DPW two more times to complete all the flowers. And the flowers come in around Memorial Day. So we have a little bit of time to really, you know, kind of think about it and determine, you know, what we're going to do. Then the next step I took was to contact Phil Patton Oster to find out, what did we really pay Rob Lutens? What did we pay Phil Lang? Rob Lutens watered for seven days a week for $350 a week. He left in 2015. Rob's annual earnings were about $7,700. Phil Lang watered seven days a week with 350 for the first year. Then in years 217 to 220, 2020, 2017 to 2020, we paid him 400 a week plus. I think there are a couple other added things in there. And Phil Lang's earnings were about 8,800. And that's kind of what was the tipping scale when we started talking about this last year at this time, when it was budget time. But we're not even going to talk about that because it's all past history. But my, my opening questions that I didn't answer, ask right now is, what is the value to our city to pay for a flower water? And how do the residents feel about the flowers? I would put it out there and say, I'm probably 90% sure that if we put it to a vote and put it on a ballot, that every resident would say, yes, I will pay one to $3 more a year to keep the flowers. That's how much the flowers are loved by everyone. And do they, you know, do they add beauty to our city? Yes. Our city is getting old. I have a friend who drives down Van Dyke every single day on her way to work. And she said, I know when I leave Shelby Township because Utica just looks so bad, except for the flowers. She goes without the flowers. In the summertime, it looks really bad. So do we need them? Absolutely. Then can we really afford to pay a flower water? Last year, we had no room in our budget. You know, there was no way. It was hard and we had DDA. And DDA did it for us for all of the years. But now the DDA is dissolved. You know, we have to look for other ways that we can afford this. So our current budget for the flowers is $9,000. It comes to a total for 87 plants and four bags of fertilizer, it's $3,730. After we pay for the flowers, we only have $5,270 left. And from my analysis, I think, I don't think that this is an easy job. And I think that to pay $16 an hour is, is pretty fair for it. You know, that's about what if we paid someone $350 a week. Okay, we can afford it. And these are the reasons that we can afford it. We have three brand new cannabis locations. That will bring us income. And I don't think like a $3,000 increase is huge. We've made changes to the police chief's post-retirement contract that saved us money in several areas. And the changes that we made to the current clerk's contract saved us money in several areas. And the changes that we are making right now by having three part-timers to replace the deputy clerk is saving us money in several areas as well. So, you know, we're not going to be rich by any means, but we do have enough money to increase the budget for the flowers. I would like to propose that we hire one individual for sure, possibly two. They could tag team or just have a backup and they would be paid $350 a week on a weekly basis for 21 hours. And that is three and a half hours. If it rained, they would just get a free day. They would water for 22 weeks. That would bring us to late, to mid to late October, which is, that's when the flowers are at their most beautiful. And the cost for that is $7,700. That leaves us short in our budget for $2,430. And I would like to change our budget to, I would like to change our budget to 12,000 and give us a little buffer. Give us a little wiggle room and that would cover the flowers and water for the year 20 to 21. Now going into 21 to 22, I'm thinking that we could maybe cut the flowers down by a third, which if they stay the same cost, it would save us $1,000 there and less flowers to water is less hours. So, you know, looking at next year, you know, we may need to make some changes. But I do feel that it's important that we keep these flowers. Comments? Okay.
I think, thanks again, Councilwoman Trenzie, for the great research you did. I mean, gathering all that information, I'm sure was a lot of work and it's very valuable for council when making our decisions. I would agree that I think everyone on council and the residents would all agree that the flowers are a beautiful addition to the city. I think the, probably the challenge is determining, you know, at what point do we exceed that value? You know, I don't know what that number is. I know last year, we kind of knocked around the idea of $10,000. And when the budget actually was made, the original budget amendment was made, we decided that 9,000 was going to be that number. So obviously, there's, you know, not complete agreement on what that number is. You know, personally, I think, you know, once we start getting past 10,000 is where, you know, I become concerned that, you know, the money, as much as we all love the flowers, you know, once we exceed 10,000, I think it's time to start talking about if, if that value is still there for the residents. I think I'm ready to, to support this based on your numbers for this year. But as you indicated, I think going forward, we need to try to find ways to do it, you know, as cost effectively as we can, but still provide that benefit to our downtown businesses and our residents. Do any other council members have any comments? One, maybe one last comment is we still haven't found somebody that would water them at that budgeted amount. So we would probably, Mr. Lang has his hand up. Yes, Mr. Lang, you're on mute.
Well, they, what was proposed was the reduced amount. The, in talking with the flower water that's done it in the past, for the 350 amended amount for six days, he would still be interested.
That's great. Thank you.
And just for the record, rain days don't necessarily account for a day off. The flowers get watered whether it rains or not. Just, just for the record.
They're learning.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further comments or questions from council? If not, we would be looking for a motion to amend our budget an additional $2,430 to account for the flower water.
I'll make that motion. I was hoping to go for a little bit more money, but I will grudgingly accept the $2,430. So for the final water budget to be $11,430.
I'll support that.
Thank you.
Motion by Trenzie, support by O'Donnell. Any comments? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sakura. Trenzie. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion stands. Congratulations, Councilwoman Trenzie, and thank you for all the hard work. We're going to have flowers this year.
Thank you, Bill, for asking your brother.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Lang. Consent business, we have none. Correspondence, we have none. At this point, I would like to make a motion to move up the treasurer's portion of the meeting to this place, this point in the, in the meeting, because there are some things that he's going to be addressing that are going to affect other items in the new business. So I'll make that motion to move the treasurer's portion of the meeting to now. I'd be looking for support.
Support.
Motion by Calendrino, support by Trenzie. Any comments? A roll call vote, please.
Sakura. Trenzie.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, thank you. And I will turn the floor over to Mr. Patton Oster.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you are all aware, the city council at its July 2020 meeting dissolved the Downtown Development Authority. Under state statute act, the Tax Increment Financing Act, MCL 125.4215. The surplus funds of the Downtown Development Authority shall revert proportionately to the respective taxing bodies. When a DDA is dissolved, the receivables and liabilities of the DDA have been reconciled and there remains in the DDA fund, the sum of $675,272.69, which is to be distributed between the City of Utica, the County of Macomb, and the Macomb Community College in the amounts of $485,301.59 to the City of Utica, $151,545.85 to Macomb County, and $38,425.25 to the Macomb Community College. I am submitting to you a request for an amendment to the fiscal year 2021 Downtown Development Authority budget to disperse the total sum of $675,272.69, charging that to expense account 248-295-99800, so that we can close out the fund. And then a subsequent motion to authorize the treasurer to disperse the surplus funds to the three taxing jurisdictions, as I explained already.
Thank you, Mr. Patton Oster. Any questions from council? If not, we would be looking for those two motions. Just in case you need to review the numbers, the, the total amounts or the accounts that are involved, they are listed on the Agenda Item Summary Form in your packet.
I'll make a motion that we approve the dispersment of $675,272.69, which is the remaining money in DDA. And then subsequently, to allocate the monies to the taxing entities, which are the City of Utica for $485,301.59, Macomb County for $151,545.85, and Macomb Community College for $38,425.25.
Support.
Motion by Trenzie, support by Deion. One quick question for Mr. Patton Oster. I think we kind of rolled both your motions into one. Does that suffice for you?
As long as the motion indicates that it's an amendment to the fiscal year 2021 budget.
I will make that amendment. I will add that to it. We're making an amendment to the 2021 budget for the amount of $675,272.69.
Thank you.
And continued support.
Thank you both. Are there any further comments or concerns from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sakura. Trenzie.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, thank you. The motions stand. Now, subsequent to releasing the DDA funds, I would like to make a motion to create an assigned fund balance for capital improvements. By doing this, we are protecting that money so that any spending of it would require a vote by council. And it would also require that those funds be used for capital improvement projects. Would anyone support that? Or are there any comments?
I'll support it.
Motion by Calendrino, support by Trenzie. Any comments or questions?
I think that's a perfect use for those funds. It kind of carries on with the purpose of the DDA had intended. And I think some of the things that you've addressed in your, your weekly updates are going to get taken care of. And we're going to see that here in the next couple of minutes, probably down in the further items in the agenda.
Yes, sir. All right, that was support by, or Councilman Ryan, you had a question, sir?
Yes, are we going to be establishing a list of the capital improvements? So as far as putting money in and the projects that we are going to be spending on, going from here on out for the next five, 10, 15 years, as far as money that we need to accumulate for those projects?
That's really more of a long-term project, but yes. That capital improvement program project is in progress right now. We could probably maybe have Mr. Patton Oster address that for us quickly after we take our roll call vote. This really is just addressing the dispersment of the DDA funds. You know, that, the total that we had earlier. Going forward, you know, we would have to continue to fund that capital improvement fund, you know, for future projects. And as Councilman Deion mentioned a minute ago, as we get through the meeting, you're going to see a large portion of that balance. I'm going to be asking for support on several big projects that we're looking at right now.
Can I say something that, and with the, the income that we'll be receiving from the cannabis and the other savings, we'll be able to put that into budget every year? You know, we're going to put 50,000 in or something will be assigned. That will be a new line item in our budget going forward. Is that correct?
That is, that is correct. Excellent comments. I had, I made the motion and I believe it was supported by Councilman Deion. Is that correct?
Trenzie.
Or Trenzie? If there's no further questions, Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sakura. Trenzie.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes. And I'm just making sure I did that correctly. Once again, I think we rolled two motions up that Mr. Patton Oster recommended into one. Mr. Patton Oster, can you chime in? Or is that adequate for what we're trying to achieve, that motion?
Yes, I agree.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
All right. We can move to new business now. We have Vino and Vibes requesting a sidewalk license. That was presented in your packet. Has everyone had a chance to review that? I'm still trying to get there. I apologize. Madam Clerk, can you perhaps present that for us?
Yes, sir. Both owners of Vino and Vibes are working tonight, so they asked that I speak to council on their behalf. So thank you. As you remember, council approved at the 3/25/2021 special council meeting to lower for this season, the sidewalk license fee. That was previously $700 for new applicants, down to just the fee for the inspections, which came out to $160 and then the $200 performance bond fee. They have paid those fees to the office and to City Hall and have submitted their drawings, which were approved by both Mr. Hicks, the building, the code enforcement, and Amanda at the Macomb County Planner. Are there any questions?
I think it's great that they're doing that. It's such a cute little place and they're going to, they're going to do really well. It was busy when I was there. Yeah.
I agree. It'll be three small tables, as you see, that will be on the sidewalk. I think it'll be really cute, but. So I am asking for a motion to approve the sidewalk license request from Anna Nolan of Vino and Vibes at 7740 Auburn Road for the 2021 season, which goes through October 31st. Mr. Lang has a question.
Yeah, well, actually, just a comment I want to add. That's a little bit of a complex location in regards to the tree grates that are existing. They're, they're not presented on that drawing. So all I would ask is that they work. So all I would ask is that they work as best they can to afford for good access around their tables to, so placement of the tables are not in such an area that it impedes on pedestrian traffic that forces them onto those tree grates, and more so for the handicap access. So just, we got to do our due diligence there. I'm actually going to try to get those filled sooner than later because of what they're presenting and just try to help downtown businesses the way we can, but just want to make make them aware that we need to try to do what we can to accommodate pedestrian traffic on what's left of the sidewalk. So that's all. Thank you.
I agree, and I just want to point out that the the three tables that they're adding to their sidewalk are two-person tables, so they would be right up against their building with the chairs on either side, and they know that they have to have the five-foot clearance, and their fence that they're proposing will be movable. So if you're going to be doing that work, I don't think it would be an issue. But I'll certainly write that note for them. Any other questions?
I'm just, are they required to have fence currently?
If they serve alcohol.
Under the new ordinances, the ones that the governor released? Anyway, just curious. Sorry. That was last year, maybe.
I think they'll have, they'll probably have to get clearance on that from the Liquor Control Bureau or whoever.
Not sure how that works. Anyway, that was all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. So if there's no further questions, Madam Clerk is requesting a motion.
Yes. Motion to approve the sidewalk license request for Vino and Vibes at seven-seven-four-zero Auburn Road.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Counsel, Counselman Dion.
I'm sorry, Ms. Terrencey jumped in with her motion out. I apologize, ma'am. I'll go ahead and second her motion.
Okay, motion by Terrencey, support by Dion. Any further comments from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Socora, Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Dion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, thank you. The motion stands.
Mr. Mayor, sir, question?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Along those lines, written in the article in Detroit News that you passed along about the social, I'll call it social distance, I'm sorry, the downtown social districts.
Yes.
And is that something that you're looking to put into work in the city of Utica? Because I think that would also go in line with kind of what we're talking about here with increasing some activity. The downtown district makes them more appealing foot traffic, too. Is that something that you're going to consider to put into motion at one point or another, or?
I would like to. I really just sent that article out to council to kind of see what the interest was there. But yeah, from my understanding of that article, if we created a social district in downtown, then people could drink a little bit more freely on the sidewalk areas, right? If you read the article, there's some interesting things that, you know, that creating the social district does allow. Unfortunately, that article, I discovered that article, and it was already past the deadline for the agenda for this this month's meeting. So maybe we can do some further research and get that on the agenda for next month. It's still early enough in the season where I think if we did get that going, you know, it would give our establishments downtown plenty of time of warm weather, you know, to enjoy those benefits. Did anyone else on council have an opportunity to look at that article that I sent out? Okay.
Yep.
I'll reach out to you all after this council meeting, you know, between now and the next meeting, and see what your thoughts are, and, you know, see about getting that on the agenda for next month, okay? Thanks for bringing that up, Councilman Dion.
Yes, thank you.
So did we do roll call on that? We we had a motion by Terrencey. We had support by Dion. The motion stood. Moving on to the next item on the agenda. As you're all aware, the Detroit Institute of Arts committed to doing a mural in downtown Utica. This is at no cost to the city. We were pretty much at the initial stages of this idea, and then COVID hit, right? Councilman Dion and I accompanied some representatives from the DIA, gave them a tour of the city. We spoke with the business owner of the the building that they initially had interest in installing the mural on. Well, I was reached, I was contacted by the DIA maybe about a month ago for the first time again, and they are interested in getting that project going again. Unfortunately, I've not had any luck in reaching the business owner for that original building concept. In talking to the DIA, they actually prefer to move this project to the fire department building on the east-facing wall. They were not disappointed at all that, you know, the original commitment probably isn't going to be able to happen now, and they would like to move forward. Going forward, if what I'm looking for tonight is approval, just to approve the concept and the working agreement with the DIA, we would still have to have final approval of any drawings or any art that they were, you know, anticipating putting on the fire station. And we would also have to work out the lease agreement, similar to what we did with the WeatherTech business owner when we installed Wendy Popco's mural on that building. So all I'm really looking for tonight is approval to install this mural on the fire department east-facing wall and to begin discussions with the DIA.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilman Ryan.
I'll support.
Support by O'Donnell. Any questions from council?
No questions, but I agree with DIA. I think that the side of the fire, you know, fire hall is a much better place.
Agreed. Yep.
All right, if there's no further questions, Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Socora, Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Dion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion stands. Thank you very much. Everyone, I will reach out to the DIA tomorrow morning and get the ball rolling. Moving on to the next item, and now you will realize why we had Mr. Paternoster jump to the head of the line. Cass Avenue Reconstruction. What this involves is the corner by the locker room bar. As you're all aware, we changed our traffic flow on Van Dyke onto Cass, which kind of created a cascade of requirements, one of which was closing southbound traffic on Cass from entering Hall Road. Since we've done that, the the this experiment was a huge success. I think we've had big support in in that traffic flow change, and we've decided to make it permanent. In fact, the county has already moved, removed those traffic lights that were on Hall Road. So we're kind of bound at this point to finalize this project and make that corner pretty, because right now it's pretty much an eyesore. We've already had HRC conduct their pre-engineering estimates, and those, that paperwork is in your packet. If we really want to revitalize our downtown, the first place, the first place that we really need to get moving on is that corner, because it's going to be very difficult to get new tenants or new owners of some of the vacant buildings. It's an eyesore, and I know we all want to beautify downtown, but if that corner remains the way it is now, it's probably all for naught. So I'm sorry, did somebody have any comments? So in your package, you'll see the HRC estimate was two hundred thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty-eight cents. That estimate did not include, if you look at the asterisk footnote, signal design, onsite material testing, and inspection and observation costs. Also, this estimate was done in July of last year. So we wanted to include a small buffer in case there were any changes in that pricing. We do have the money now that in DDA proceeds now. I think it's an appropriate expense, as that's what the DDA really should have been doing with their money anyways, was improving the downtown district. So I think this is important to get moving. Tonight, I would be looking for a motion to allocate two hundred and ten thousand of the proceeds from the DDA for Cass Avenue Reconstruction. Second, a motion to amend the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one general fund budget to increase engineering account one-on-one, four-four-one, eight-two-one, zero-zero-zero by twenty thousand. And a third motion to authorize HRC to prepare the design and bid specs.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Dion.
Sir, I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the items as presented, to include the improvements to the downtown district and the budget amendment that's required.
Support.
Motion by Dion, support by Terrencey. Mr. Paternoster, does that motion satisfy the requirements?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Any further comments from council?
Great work, Gus.
Thank you. Well, you started, you started, your names on all the documents, if you looked at your packet.
All right, okay. Put me in the, put me in the legal hot seat when the trouble come.
So if if this bombs, you know who I'm going to, right?
It's only the last guy did it.
All right, if there's no further comments, a roll call vote, please.
Cora, Terrencey. O'Donnell.
No.
Dion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes. The motion stands. Thank you, everybody. All right. Moving forward, Grant Park Walking Path. Also in your packet, you'll see on the Agenda Item Summary Form, the Grant Park Walking Path is far past its expected life. It's deteriorating badly. I know before I came into the office this this morning, as Mr. Lang will probably validate, because I sent him a thank you email from Grant Park about how nice the park looked this morning. Thank you, DPW, for keeping that up. But as I sat in the part, in the Nancy Street parking lot, I just watched on the walking path, and this was probably at eight-thirty in the morning. I saw five people walking on the path. Several of them had dogs. Several of them were just walking on their own. A mix of ages, mostly folks, you know, that are senior citizens, it seemed. I've spent a lot of time, you know, observing that path, just to try to get a feel for how well-used it is. And I've got to say, it is very well-used. No matter if I'm there on a weekday or the weekend, it's hard to get there and not see somebody walking on the path, even in the winter. It was the same, same thing. So we do have a commitment from Parks and Rec based on some original numbers that we had. The belief was that to replace that path, the the total cost was sixty thousand dollars. We're not a hundred percent sure where that number came from, but it wasn't accurate. Mr. Lang provided us, provided us a more accurate number, and it's more in the range of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for full replacement. So again, I'm looking to allocate some of the DDA proceeds to this project. Again, I feel it's an appropriate project for DDA proceeds as much of the work of the DDA focused on Grant Park. You know, fixing up things, adding the security lights, adding the basketball nets, the new fencing on the courts. So this would seem to be an appropriate use of those proceed funds to me. So tonight, I'd be looking for a motion to authorize the DPW engineer replacement of Grant Park Walking Path and solicit formal bids for the replacement with funds provided from Parks and Rec Commission, assigned fund balance, and funds returned to general fund by the DDA. I'd also need another motion to amend the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one general fund budget as follows. Increase transfer in from assigned fund balance, Parks and Recreation Fund one-on-one, seven-five-two-six-nine-five-zero-four-zero by sixty thousand dollars, and increase Parks Development Fund one-zero-one, seven-five-one-nine-seven-four-zero-zero-zero by a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Any questions or concerns from council?
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the allocation of the funds as presented from the the budget amendment, and then the process allowing the HRC to gather the bids, the formal bids for the.
I don't think we're going to be asking HRC to get involved with this. Is that true, Mr. Lang? Mr. Lang, can you hear us? Looks like he might be froze.
So our goal, yeah, our.
No, am I froze? No, we can hear you now. We can hear you.
Okay, our, so our our goal is to engage with HRC, but on a limited, limited fashion, and then request either through ourselves, put the bid out on Mitten, or just do a local RFP to a fore-known local companies that can, that can do the work for us.
Okay, then I'll amend the, I'll amend the the motion to include, or to reiterate the motion, it'll be to authorize the budget amendment as presented and to seek multiple bids through the RFP process or on Mitten.
Motion by Dion.
I support.
Support by O'Donnell. Any further comments from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Cora, Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Dion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, thank you, everybody. Motion stands. And I'm trying to see, that would move to me, to department reports. As I mentioned, we had to to continue doing remote meetings. I had to declare a state of emergency at the local level. Again, nothing really changed in the city other than allowing council and all our public means to be held remotely. The way the state rules work, though, I was only, my declaration only lasts for seven days. So my declaration will expire tomorrow morning if I'm not, if I'm recalling correctly. So tonight, while the state law does allow for local governments, though, to continue on with remote meetings throughout the end of year as needed. So that would be through December thirty-first, if council as a whole voted to declare an emergency declaration. That doesn't commit us to doing remote meetings all the way through December thirty-first. It just gives us the option. That would also be true for some of our smaller commissions, you know, like the municipal building authority. There's only three or four of those folks, you know, if they wanted to meet at count, in council chambers and were able to maintain social distance, they would be able to have that option. This just gives us the option to continue remotely if we so need to. So on that note, I do have a resolution declaring COVID-nineteen state of emergency. Ms. McGreal, do I need to read this entire resolution?
It was in the council package, correct?
That's correct.
You don't have to read it.
Okay, so you can reference that in your council packet. I'd be looking for a motion for council to adopt the resolution to declare a COVID-nineteen state of emergency in the city of Utica.
So moved.
Motion by O'Donnell.
Support.
Was that Councilman Ryan?
Yes, sir.
Support by Ryan. Any comments from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Socora, Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Dion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, thank you, everybody. Motion stands. We are now in a state of emergency until December thirty-first. The next item from my office is the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals Month Resolution. As we're all aware, we've had some pretty heartbreaking incidents in our city involving animal cruelty. In doing research, I discovered that the ASPCA, which is the American Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals, actually had Actually has a national campaign. That proclaims April every year, the month of prevention of cruelty to animals month. I thought that coincided nicely with our city making a very strong and positive statement. About where we stand as far as animal cruelty goes. I'm also planning a puppy parade that'll go from Grant Park to. Pioneer Park on April twenty fourth, starting at two P M at Grant Park. Again, this is, you know, our response to some of these tragic events that have happened in our city. In showing the public and our residents. That we love animals in Utica, we support animals. And we care about their welfare. So again, I'm not going to read the entire resolution, but it is included in your packet. I would be asking for a motion to adopt. Or to adopt the resolution to declare April two thousand twenty one. As prevention of cruelty to animals month.
Moved.
Support.
Support by Deion, thank you. Any comments from council?
Is this something that we'll do every year or just this is just for this month, correct?
This resolution is just for two thousand twenty one.
Twenty one, okay.
You know, if if council wishes, we can bring this up every year and and, you know, make April of every year. Prevention of Cruelty to Animals Month, but that's not what this resolution is doing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think we had a motion in support. Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sakura, Terrencey. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, thank you, everybody. And I hope to see you all at the Puppy Parade. We're getting great support. From various animal groups. I know we're gonna have the Humane Society of Macomb. There with animals for adoption. That's the plan, at least at this point. We're also gonna have the wonderful group, the Detroit Pit Crew Dog Rescue Group, which have this group. Really loves Utica, especially our police department. They have a huge following. They have, I believe it's over four hundred thousand followers on Facebook. They're already promoting this event. I could not keep their excitement bridled long enough. To get our announcements out, so they actually beat us getting this event promoted. So they're gonna be there. We also have Sterling's Legacy. Who we've really formed a strong bond with since, you know, the tragic event in Grant Park several years ago. And we have a new group that's coming to town, the Shelby Utica Rebels Football and Cheer. Club is going to be there with their jerseys and their uniforms and everything marching in the parade as well, so. We're also hoping to have two very special guests that I'm not gonna mention who they are. But they were directly involved in some of the events that, you know, we are trying to combat with this event. I'll just give you a hint, they have four legs. And they're very fuzzy, so, you know, we're hoping that their health holds up and they're they'll be able to attend this as our special guests. So thank you, everybody. I appreciate the support of making this month Prevention of Animal Cruelty Month. And the support of the Puppy Parade on the April twenty fourth. Moving on, next item, we have two appointments. For Parks and Rec Committee. Both of these folks have attended several of the last Parks and Rec meetings. And Kate, our current Kate Adams, our current chairman. Asked that we I present these names to council for appointment to Parks and Rec. The first person is Candace Shellnut. Who also happens to be the founder of Sterling's Legacy, the one of the animal cruelty anti cruelty. Organizations that I mentioned. And the other candidate is Jack Shepard, a longtime and very involved Utica resident. He has a passion for our parks as well as Candace. And I agree with Chairwoman Adams that both of these folks would be great additions to our Parks and Rec Committee. So I would be looking for a motion to approve both Candace and Jack to Parks and Rec Commission.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Candace Shellnut and Jack. God dang Jack and Jack Shepard. Thank you, Jack. Senior moment.
Motion by Deion.
Support.
Support by O'Donnell. Any comments from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Cora, Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, thank you, everybody. Very quickly, I would just like to thank Women's Life Chapter nine eleven. For their generous donation of a dog waste station. We were getting criticized on social media. For not having one of these in our dog park. It did seem a bit ironic that we didn't have one. Women's Life Chapter nine eleven came to our defense and said, you're right, they need one and we're giving them one. So thanks to them and also thanks to the DPW for already having that installed in the large dog. Side of the park. DPW took the lead from there and they have purchased another dog waste station that will be installed soon on the small dog side. So as always, Women's Life Chapter nine one one is one of the leading organizations in our community. They do so many good things, you know, from helping people and that have tragic accidents such as fires and floods. All the way down to buying dog poop stations for our city parks. So I would just like to publicly thank them for their continuing good work in our city.
Mister Mayor. You may have just answered it, but as we all know, I'm a little dim. What is a dog waste station? Exactly.
It's a pole that has a dispenser at the top for little doggy bags, little plastic bags. And it has a waste can at the bottom that once you fill those little plastic bags. You can put them in that can.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. And I don't need a motion for that one, so that's all. Thanks again, Women's Life Chapter nine one one. We love you. This one, you're probably all aware, but the Davis Street Bridge repairs are complete and the bridge is open ahead of schedule and under budget. I love saying those two things next to each other. We've already had a very positive response from the residents. I know that we have a pretty large community of bikers, bicycl bicyclics, people that ride bicycles. And they've reached out and expressed their thanks for getting that done so quickly. So thank you to the DPW. You did a great job and we really appreciate it. And the last item for me, I bet you're all happy to hear that. Is the gypsy moth suppression budget amendment. When you probably all recall, I think it was two meetings ago. We approved a budget to allow the county to come in and spray for gypsy moths. In the area, basically in the general area of Grant Park. At that time, they didn't have the exact numbers. Both for the total acreage and the cost per acre. Those numbers have come in and they've sent a contract to us. Which is in your packet. The price per acre actually went down a little bit. But the area increased a little bit, so the final numbers are. Hundred point nine acres require spraying at a hundred and forty dollars per acre totaling fourteen thousand one hundred and twenty six. Dollars. At the time of this initial budget amendment, we only budgeted for fourteen thousand dollars. So we need to amend that budget amendment to add for the additional one hundred and twenty six dollars. So I will be asking for a budget amendment to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty one general fund budget. Increasing Fund one oh one four four one nine six seven zero zero six. Gypsy moth suppression by two hundred dollars to give us, you know, very slight buffer there in case anything does change. Any questions from council?
So moved.
Motion by Terrencey.
Support.
Support by Deion. If there's no further questions, Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Cora, Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, thank you, everybody. Motion stands. That's all for mayor comments tonight. Oh, no, it's not. I'm sorry, I did have to add one more thing. As you're all aware by now, I'm sure. We lost Nancy Clark, our deputy clerk. She moved on to a new opportunity. And we're in the process of hiring three part-time positions. We discussed this and approved this at our last council meeting. This is late information because I just spoke to Beth Ricketts, our former clerk. This afternoon. About the need to both help our current staff because we are, things are pretty hectic right now for. The our employees that are, you know, still working and trying to get through a very busy time. Beth said she has interest if the city so desires. To come and work part-time for as long as we would need her until we can get these new employees hired. And if we also wanted to use her for some training purposes, once we do get the new folks hired. I'm hoping we have interviews scheduled for the rest of this week. And we hope to be making some final decisions on hiring early next week. I talked to some to Beth about what terms she would agree to, you know, what would be comfortable for her to come back and help us. And what I'm thinking is she agreed that she would come in at ten hours per week. As needed. And she'd be willing to do it for eight weeks. So that total budget amount we would need is roughly sixteen hundred dollars. We may not need all of that time, but that would give us, I think, adequate time. To both, you know, stopgap the the issues we're having in the office right now. We're getting very behind, especially on some building stuff. And it would also give us the opportunity to glean some of best knowledge in in get some of the new the new folks that we're bringing in trained. Any questions from council about this? Faith, I I couldn't quite hear you.
I think it's good news. I think that's great that she wants to help us out at this time. Lori, are you okay with it? Okay, then, hey. I'll make a motion that we approve the budget budget amendment to have Beth come in. Part-time for the next ten weeks at ten hours, eight weeks at ten hours a week.
Support.
Sixteen hundred dollars.
Motion by Terrencey, support by O'Donnell. Any comments from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sakura, Terrencey. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan. Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes. Thank you. Motion stands. In that, I'm just making sure I didn't miss anything. That concludes everything from me. I know Councilwoman Torren or Townsend had an item that she would like to discuss. And I would be honored to hand the floor over to her at this point.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to bring up the graffiti that's happening in the city, mainly on the outside of the tunnels. I've had some residents come to me and talk about their concern about the graffiti outside of the tunnels. So I wanted to get people's feedback. On maybe starting a resident committee like we did with the water committee. So that we can gather some information from Chief Cody and from Mister Lang. And find out ways that we can either try and curtail some of the graffiti on the outside of the tunnel. Or ways that we can cover it up and and. I started talking to different residents and some of them have some wonderful ideas. On things we may do on even encompassing some of the art students at the local high schools, you know, or the junior high. And I think if I could do a resident committee. And kind of put everybody together and maybe try and get some thoughts together, that that might be a nice idea and we could come up with maybe some new solutions because. It's obviously gonna be an ongoing problem that we're going to have, but some fresh ideas might be kind of nice. So I was wondering what everybody's thoughts were on that.
I think it's a great idea. I know, like, like you mentioned, the resident water committee. You know. When that whole crisis came about, I know the ideas that were bounced around by that committee. Were very valuable and, you know, some good things came out of it. Some good things were discussed that we still haven't gotten around to implementing properly or discussing properly. But that was a huge value, I thought, to me as a council person to be able to. You know, bring the residents together and discuss ideas and get some fresh insights. So I I think it's a fantastic idea.
I think it's a great idea. People like to be involved.
Yeah, is that something that I would need approval from council to do that? Or?
I know when we formed the resident water committee, council did. Direct me at that time because I was leading that committee. That I was able to form it and how many members that I was allowed, I believe it was seven at that point. So I I would suggest we do something similar would be to authorize you to form a resident water or resident graffiti committee. And set a maximum, you know, number of of resident members that you would want. Would seven be adequate, do you think?
I think so. I think so.
And you don't have to have all the way, you know, you can have less than seven. I think the rationale, again, back when I had started my committee. Was if you get too many members, you know, it dilutes the ideas and.
Right.
So, you know, I I'd be glad to make a motion to authorize. Councilwoman Townsend to form a resident graffiti committee with a maximum number of residents at seven.
Support.
Motion by Calendrino, support by O'Donnell. Any further comments from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sakura, Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes. That was pretty easy.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for all the research. I know in our conversations, I know you've done a lot of work on this as well as. A couple of the other issues and I appreciate it and I'm sure the residents will appreciate all your hard work too. So thank you again. We have nothing from, or are there any other comments from council members? Any any reports for the month? Nope. All right, moving on, we have nothing from planning. Mister Grusa. You had an item that you wanted to discuss and I believe you're on mute.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. The item. Sorry, let me get my glasses on. Sorry about that. It's a resolution to waive penalties for non-filing of a property transfer affidavit. This started last year where the State Tax Commission is requiring all. Municipalities. To have a resolution if they are not going to charge homeowners or or new owners. A late fee if a property transfer affidavit is filed forty-five days after the sale. Typically, the property transfer affidavit is one of the documents that are signed at closing. And it's one of the twenty documents that you typically sign when you purchase a property. We've had, you know, pretty good. Numbers coming in with the property transfer affidavits. But again, it's an affidavit. It's not the legal document that I use to change the owner's name on a on a sale or on a property. I get warranty deeds, quick claim deeds, land contracts. Any type of judgment from a court probate. from a court, probate, share deed, share sale, any of those documents, those are the legal documents that transfer title. And I get a copy of that from the county register of deeds, and I use that documentation to change the names. The property transfer affidavit does add a little bit more information. If it's a family sale, they'll check off one of the boxes. Or if it's, if there's an exemption that the property should not be uncapped, the property transfer affidavit would inform me that it shouldn't be uncapped, and that's what I would use to not uncapture property. But again, we typically do receive this, and I don't feel it's, you know, we haven't been charging late fees, and this was enacted back in, back in 1995 when Prop. Lee started. As far as I know, I don't think Utica has ever charged a homeowner a late fee. And in fact, I think only one community in Macomb County does charge a late fee. So personally, I don't agree with charging a new property owner a delayed fee. They typically get a sticker shock when they see their new tax bill because of the uncapping. I just, that's personally my opinion. I don't think we should charge a late fee, but that's up to council if they have, if you guys have any questions or concerns.
Does anyone on council have questions?
I agree. I agree with you, Mr. Grusa. I totally do.
I agree. Yeah. I also agree about the sticker shock as a 25-year-old. I think I had my first stitch in my chest when I first had that cap removed or lifted and almost fell over.
If there's no further comments, Mr. Grusa would be looking for a motion to adopt the resolution to waive penalties for non-filing of property transfer affidavits.
Yes, exactly.
So moved.
Motion by Terrence, support by O'Donnell. If there's no further comments, Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Cora, Terrence.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Merrick, Calendino.
Yes, motion stands, and the resolution is adopted. Thank you, Mr. Grusa.
Thank you.
Did you have anything further at this point in the meeting?
No, no.
Very good. Thank you. We have nothing from, we have nothing from building tonight. I do know he's been working very hard with our new marijuana dispensaries. If any of you have made the drive on Van Dyke South Hall Road, you'll see that both of those facilities are, the construction's well underway. And they've been keeping Mr. Hicks and everyone in the city office quite busy. Library, Ms. Daigie.
Yes, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll just update you on what's been going on in the library just for the couple of last few months. In February, we did open with limited hours for what we call grab and go. People could come in, select a book, check it out, or more than one book. And then in the, at the beginning of March, we restored our regular hours. So we are now open Monday through Thursday from 11 until 7, Friday from 11 until 4, Saturday from 11 until 2:30. And we did restore internet service. We have one computer that's available for patrons. We don't have more than one because we're still maintaining social distancing in the library. And the copier is available, and then, of course, browsing the shelves is available. We have welcomed our patrons back in. We're still doing curb service. If people like that and want that, the majority of our patrons, the majority of our patrons have actually wanted to come back inside the library, though, and we're glad to see them. And during all of this time, Catherine Francis, who is our children's services coordinator, has been making monthly activity packets for the kids that are free. She puts together a craft. She puts together some reading suggestions, some games and things that parents and families, that families can play together. And they were free, first come, first served. So we have been continuing that since we can't have any activities inside the library. We do ask people, we still ask people to limit their visits to 15 minutes because of the whole issue of having no real ability to open up this building and recirculate some air. So we ask people to limit their visits to 15 minutes, but that's worked out fine. And we will have a summer reading program starting in June. It will be virtual in terms of programming, so we will have things on Facebook that people can actually log into, and it will stream. They'll be able to log into at their convenience when it's good for them. And take, it has some crafts and things involved as well. And once again, Catherine, Mrs. Francis will have some packets available for everybody. This is National Poetry Month, so I'm actually going to recite a short poem for y'all in the spirit of National Poetry Month. This is by Langston Hughes. "I stay cool and dig all jive. It's the way I stay alive." My motto, as I live and learn, is dig and be dug in return. And that's all I have. Y'all have any questions?
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Absolutely. Let's get our beat, get the beat down there.
Thank you, Ms. Daigie. Does anyone from council have any questions regarding the library? If not, I'd like to excuse Ms. Daigie. I know she's got a long day tomorrow, and thank you for giving your council update. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
Moving on to fire, Chief Willsec.
Yeah, Mayor, can you guys hear me? I have a problem with the audio. Is it good?
Yes.
Okay, we hired a new firefighter EMT named Jared Baggy. He will be finishing his EMT up in the middle of May, and he's currently doing orientation. He comes from the military. He's getting his credits transferred over, and we're welcoming a new addition to our department. Other than that, everything's going pretty smooth.
Great. Thank you, Chief. Any questions for Chief Willsec? If there's no objections, I'd also like to allow Mr. Willsec to drop off if he so desires. Thanks again, Chief.
Okay.
Police Chief Cody.
Just a real quick announcement. Want to let the public know we are looking for crossing guards. We run a small complement of crossing guards that assist at school times, arrivals and dismissals to help some of the pedestrians get across the street at some of the intersections in our city. If somebody is looking to just take up about an hour in the morning, an hour during the dismissal time, and sometimes in the middle of the day when they have half-days and so forth, and they're interested in taking part in that, please contact the Utica Police Department. Sergeant Erdle is currently handling that, and they can submit applications to him. If they have any interest, just give us a call, and we can fill them in on further details. And that's all that I have for us.
Great. Thank you, Chief. Again, if no objections, Chief, have a wonderful night. We'll see you in the morning.
Thank you. Everybody have a wonderful evening.
DPW, Mr. Lang.
Yes, thank you. Mayor and Council, you should have in your packet an agenda item summary requiring two actions. This is for the replacement of two components in the larger playscape at Grant Park. They're better known as the climbing components, the tinsel tower climber and the horseshoe climber. Those were experiencing multiple part failures and reached out to Miracle Midwest, the company that builds that product. And they're, what they put together was a replacement package for those two items. They've actually changed how those are even, how they're built. So it'll be, it'll be the same but different. Those, the cost to replace those items is a total of $4,384. But that would require a budget amendment. Currently, in the parks maintenance fixture maintenance budget, I have only $1,100. So it would require a motion to amend fiscal year budget 2020 in the amount of $3,300 to increase the maintenance parts fixtures line item 10175193500 by the $3,300. And then the subsequent motion would be to authorize the DPW to place the order in the amount of $4,384 to Miracle Midwest, and then also point out that they are, it's a proprietary item. They're the only dealer that we can purchase these items from.
Any questions for Mr. Lang? If no questions, we'd be looking for those motions.
I like the motion.
Part.
Motion by Deanne. Was that, was that Councilman Deanne?
Ryan.
Councilman Ryan. Motion by Ryan, support by Terrence. Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Cora, Terrence.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Merrick, Calendino.
Yes, thank you, everybody. And Madam Clerk, it's your point in the meeting, administration.
Thank you, sir. I don't have anything for tonight's meeting.
All right. Nothing from Parks and Rec. I already have mentioned the puppy parade that'll be taking place on April 24th. I thank the Parks and Rec for all the work and support they've given me in getting that event together. And again, hope to see everybody out there. Nothing from Historic District Commission. City Attorney, Ms. McGrath.
I have nothing for tonight's meeting, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, bills payable. You've been presented with all the bills in your packets. If there's no questions, I'd be looking for a motion to pay the bills.
So moved.
Motion by Terrence.
Second.
Support by Deanne. Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Cora, Terrence.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Merrick, Calendino.
Yes, thank you. All right, at this point, we open up the floor to the public for any communications involving items that did not appear on the agenda. It looks like everyone on the call at this point, except for, I can account for everyone but one. So is there anyone from the public that would like to make comments? Going once, Mr. Lang.
Yeah, well, if there's no one from the public, I've just got something else I'd like to share with council, actually, two items real quick. One, in reference to last, last, last month's reports in the auxiliary parking, we'll call it, at at Pioneer. I'm at a Pioneer Park, yes, the dog park. I would like to, again, get council's opinion on whether we can finish those projects out and add on to that parking lot, or at least make it usable. So I think I'll ask officially at next month's meeting, just to give you an update. But secondly, I wanted to share with council the mindset that we currently have at the Public Works Department in regards to our parks, and that's the not opening of the public restrooms. Last year, during the surge of COVID, we didn't have the public restrooms open, nor the drinking fountains, because we cannot supply a clean environment in which people can utilize. That's my current stand on that issue. Unless I'm directed otherwise, we're going to keep the restrooms closed. And it's because we can't, you know, we can clean them in the morning, but we can't clean them in between. You know, certainly, and we don't typically clean them every day. We could. But again, with the limited resources and whatnot, that's where we're at. Again, if you want something different, we can, we can look at doing it. I'm not sure where the state guidelines is on the, on things like that. I knew at one point, things like drinking fountains and that were out of, you know, to be left off, but I kind of want to do some research on that and then looking for opinions on what you folks want as well.
Thanks, Mr. Lang. Again, I know I would like to look into that further because there probably is some kind of direction from the state. I would ask, though, for the April 24th event. I don't know what kind of crowd we'll have, but it could be significant. You know, if it's not too much work, I would like to see the restrooms open at both Grant and Pioneer on the April, for the April 24th event. It could, I could see, you know, the public really having an issue if we didn't have restrooms available that day, if we had a large turnout.
Yep. That's part of bringing that up was, so we, I can make, we can clean them ahead of time, and then the one, I think we can, we can, we can adjust the timer to unlock automatically, and we'll make sure you have keys to unlock as well.
Okay.
But I just want to let you know, in case you're getting complaints, we've had complaints, and that's pretty much where we're at, at least right now.
Yeah, I've had a couple of calls, and I incorrectly said that you'd be opening them up soon. Because that's what I, I just assumed that's what was going to happen, so I'll try to dig up those emails I got in.
Right, right. Well, it hits a little closer to home because of the fact that we're, you know, we're seeing like extremely high numbers.
Right.
And, and my daughter is recovering from COVID, so.
So anyone on council have, any questions for Mr. Lang?
Sorry to hear that, Mr. Lang.
Yeah, very sorry.
Mayor, may I ask a question of council as well? Piggybacking off of Bill's comment about the restrooms, we've been asked by residents who are renting the pavilions if they are able to, we've been letting them know that the restrooms usually don't open until Memorial Day, but they may not open due to COVID. And they have, some have inquired about having, renting a porta potty and having it delivered. And so I thought I would ask council and see if we've done that in the past, or if it's possible. You know, I wasn't aware that there were one-day rentals, but, or same-day delivery and pickup, but apparently they are, so I just thought I would ask the council that.
Have we seen that in the past, Mr. Lang? At our parks?
We haven't allowed it. We haven't been approached by it. I mean, we have bought, we have brought porta johns in for our own use. Certainly, I would see where it would be, you know, I don't believe it would be a problem. Typically, you know, I think that falls under our temporary structure ordinance or something like that to have a porta john on site outside of a construction site, but I think, you know, I don't know if council just needs to approve it, or if there's anything precluding it, I can't answer to that. But I wouldn't see where it would be an issue. And actually, I have a friend of mine that does the porta john business, and yeah, they can, they can drop it off in the morning, pick it up in the, in the evening, so I don't think we would see a whole lot of those myself.
A couple of things would concern me. One, the delivery truck would have to drive, you know, into the internal area of the park. Would that present any kind of safety issues? You know, I'm guessing they would want to put these porta johns, you know, near the pavilions areas. You know, I've heard about damage, you know, to the park or trees.
Yeah, well, both pavilions are actually real close to the parking lot, so we could, we could, along with the permit, we could just sketch out where we'd like to see those units placed, and they would be like, you know, like the far west end of the parking lot, next to the tennis court, you know, or shortly off the tennis court by the, by the poles or something. Enough a way that wouldn't be intrusive. Um, enough a way that wouldn't be intrusive, where they wouldn't have to drive on the, the parking lot.
Or the, you know, I guess my other concern is if there would be any like legal risk for the city. You know, say the company didn't pick up their, uh, porta-jan, you know, till the next day and if it got vandalized or graffiti, you know, uh, maybe Ms. McGrath could comment on that if, if that puts us at any kind of legal risk as a city.
Well, I would certainly want them to sign some sort of waiver or something acknowledging that, uh, the city is not liable for anything that could happen. Um, I'd also wonder what kind of COVID protocol would be, because you're, you're not going to be able to limit those stations to just the people who rented it and it's obviously not being cleaned out in between people. So I do wonder what, um, you know, what kind of protocol should be followed if there's any guidance or anything.
So I guess it kind of sounds like we need to do a little bit more homework on this before, uh, voting on it.
Yep.
All right. Well, I haven't seen anyone else pop on, so I'm giving one last chance if there's anyone from the public that'd like to make comments. And there are not. Um, at this point, uh, we are going to go to closed session. Uh, so we will be, uh, going out into a breakout room to talk about some tax tribunal issues. Uh, when we come back, we will make any necessary, uh, motions and votes based on the content of that discussion. Uh, that will be the only, uh, formal city business that we do, other than adjournment. Uh, so just letting the public know that we will be going to closed session, coming back for any necessary votes based on that discussion. And then the only, only other business will be to adjourn the meeting. So I need to create a breakout room.
Here we'll need a motion, uh, to exit the regular.
Oh, yes, that's true. Uh, can I have a motion to enter closed session, please?
So moved. So moved. Oh, support.
Thanks, babe.
Motion by O'Donnell, support by Terencey. Uh, Madam Clerk, a roll call vote.
Sakura, Terencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes. The motion passes. All right, I'm trying to make sure I'm doing this room correctly. Bear with me. If I've done it correctly, we will be going into a breakout room.
Gus doesn't want to join us in the breakout room.
Let's talk about him. Oh, boy, never mind.
I have to turn all these things off and on and it's not an easy.
Do you have a, a filter on? Because I, I, all I can see is the white, the white wall behind you come right through your face in this area. It's all white right here.
I did, I did.
Is, is that when he inserts the, "I am not a cat"?
You might have to go in there and say, "Present." If you don't, it's okay, Phil.
Hey, Gus. Casper?
Yes.
Did you hear me? Uh, the filter, it looks like you're in the background. The white comes right through your face like this. It's really weird.
The what?
The white.
Uh, that's my beard.
From your background?
That's facial hair, you know, you don't know much about that.
Someone must gave up the fight a long time ago, Gus. Some other people should just jump on the bandwagon. My grind's like six weeks from it.
Hey, I still got more hair than you, Tom, so that.
All right, I'm making sure we got everybody. Phil, are we good?
Hey, Gus, are you, do you want to record this portion of the meetings? It still says recording.